Call to ARDA, the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees at 5:37 October the 11th.
Four, excuse me, that's four.
4:37, excuse me, I said 5:37, I meant 4:37. It's been a long day. Roll call, please, Catherine.
Okay, we have Trustee Baldini.
Here.
Trustee Baker.
Here.
Trustee Martenson.
Here.
Trustee Rios.
Here.
Trustee Segura.
Here.
Trustee Iverson.
Here.
And Trustee Mancuso.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to...
Point of order.
I'm sorry?
Point of order. Oh, I was left out of the equation.
Did we get the trustee...
I'm so sorry, I forgot trustee...
I am here, thank you.
He is here. We can see him in the flesh, he is here.
Trustee Kawaja is here.
Thank you.
All right, we will move on to closed session. At this time, the Board will devote a total of up to 15 minutes for comments to the Board of Trustees regarding closed session items. Individuals will be limited to a five-minute presentation. Do we have any public comment for closed session? All right. We will be discussing in closed session conference with labor negotiation. Hold on. Public employment and 5.3, public employee evaluation. We'll adjourn into closed session. All right, we return back to open session. And I have some exciting news to report out from closed session, and that is that we have hired Amber Wade as Chief of Police, and she is to start in her new role on December 17th of 2018. And so I know she's not here in the room, but congratulations, Amber Wade, very deserving to have this position, and it was a unanimous vote of the Board to hire her.
All right, I'm going to give her a hand.
Yes. All right, and now if you will, join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now we will go to 6.3, adoption of agenda. Board members, are there any changes or anything to the agenda? Seeing none, hearing none, agenda adopted. And now we will go to public comment. Public comment. At this time, the Board will devote a total of up to 15 minutes for comments to the Board of Trustees regarding any subject not appearing as an agenda item for this meeting but over which the Board has jurisdiction. The public may ask the Board to place an item related to the business of the district on a future Board agenda. No action or discussion will occur at this time on such items. Individuals will be limited to five-minute presentation. At this time, the Board Chair will poll those in attendance regarding their intent to speak on any item on the agenda. I thought I saw a card here. I have one card right now for Joanne Boszemberg. Welcome, Joanne.
Can I close this without damage?
Right, if you'll leave it just like that.
Okay. Get good direction from Carol Lee. Well, I'm here for a couple of reasons. One, to say thank you to the Board for your continued support of the educational process, for, you know, getting close to finishing another semester, and your openness to do business in public. And to, the other thing I'm here for is to, which I made a commitment to do, to thank the faculty for their standing their ground related to Trustee Martenson's interruption of their processes, both faculty and staff, and to, for having done the right thing in filing the complaint to do with the ethics. I sat here two years with many, most of you, but Ms. Martenson, from the beginning, and there was never any intent to work as a team member for this Board. There never was any intent to be a servant, which is what you all are, and it's what I saw myself to be in my political years. If you aren't serving, then, then you're grandstanding, then you're getting your 15 minutes of fame. And so I, it's very sad that Ms. Martenson could have been a very effective Board member for us, but she chose from the beginning, and I told her a few months into her term that it was very obvious she was a rogue trustee, and that, I think, was satisfying to her. And the interesting thing to me is the support of the Taxpayers Association where, in reality, your legal costs for the district were driven up considerably over the years that she's been on the Board because of her going to the district attorney, going to her, to the attorney herself. She was very clear that she, there were no boundaries. You wasn't obligated, she wasn't had, wasn't obligated to stay away from any staff. If she had, if a student said to her, "I'm not happy," then she felt that she could go to whatever faculty that was. There was no recognition of the fact she wasn't anybody's supervisor other than Dr. Kraft. And, as I said, to me, that's very sad. The vision was not there, and the newspaper has protected her through this campaign phenomenally in speaking with the editor and with the publisher, and actually with Lee Enterprises, who owns the Napa Register and all the newspapers in the Valley. I'm sure you're probably aware that there's no place to go other than one of their newspapers. So my comment to them is, is this, you know, how you run business throughout the United States, that you, or they, you know, own other stations or other newspapers. Anyway, that being said, I wish you well, the Kyle and Mary Ann in terms of your reelection, and the community will bring Jeff Dodd on to replace Trustee Martenson, and you can get on with business. I appreciate the fact that you have worked hard to draw the community closer and to what we're doing, and to recognize the vision is careers and training that haven't even been invented yet, and some of you are aware of that and want to move in the forward fashion. The other thing is that I would mention the housing situation that you're being confronted with in terms of using your, the excess land, or the land that's being determined that does not, it does not need to be used by the college itself, and that's another question that you have to ask yourself. Are we going to need bricks and mortar in five years? We don't know that, but in the, in the planning for housing, Diana Shabody, had been off two years, so it'd be at least three years ago, shared with this Board the concept of intergenerational housing. So I would just leave you with that project, and as you go forward with the housing groups in the community, you know, I think that we need to be more creative, and you can't tell me that there aren't places in the United States that are in the same boat that we're in, so we can take the responsibility of doing that research. But the intergenerational facility that she, the concept that she brought forward was south side of the campus where you couldn't, you wouldn't notice...
I'm sorry, Joanne, we're at time.
No, you're not going to do that to me.
Okay.
Because I've waited 25 years to hear that and to go over time, so I'm going to share this, and then you won't see me again. But the concept is a five-story building that could go on the south side where you wouldn't even see the height, and it could be multi-story for the purpose of a daycare center on the ground floor, senior housing with even some assisted living on the next couple of floors, and then the student housing, SRO, what we call SROs, or small-room occupancies on the other floors, the students could live there free if they worked in the daycare center or with the senior citizens. So, I mean, that to me is creativity. You know, you're, you're in dreamland with whatever you smoke, if you think there's any land left in this county to give us affordability that, for the work, for the workforce housing, without going up and without some creativity. So again, thank you, and I appreciate the fact that you have stood your ground and followed through with the ethics violation of Trustee Martenson.
Is there any other public comment? All right, then we will move on to our constituent group reports. 8.1, Academic Senate, Amanda Badger.
Good evening, Board. My comments will be brief this evening. I want to just report out that the Academic Senate, through its various committees, is working very steadily on a whole number of policies and procedures. The policies will be making their way to you at some point in the future. We are also, as a Senate, taking the opportunity, starting this past Tuesday, to look at the current committee restructure pilot and consider what is currently working, what is not working, and what will be the structure moving forward after this May, when our committee pilot comes to a conclusion. Also coming to a conclusion in May will be my tenure as President of the Academic Senate, as well as those of my Vice Presidents, Fay Smiley and Sherri Lowes, and so we will work very hard to have a structure more or less in place so that those who follow after us will have a sense of how they're going to get the work of the business done, the business of the Senate done. There we go. And finally, tomorrow, I'm off to meet with my fellow Academic Senate Presidents at the Area B Meeting, and where we prepare and refine resolutions to bring to fall plenary of the State Academic Senate in November. So that is it. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll move on to Administrative Confidential Senate Report, but this does not look like Robert Harris. It looks like Maria Villagomez.
Thank you, is that me? Good evening, Board of Trustees. Greetings from the city of brotherly love, Philadelphia. Go Eagles! I am currently attending the Association of Title IX Administrators as part of the Campus Commitment to Supporting Students and Staff. A special thank you to Maria Villagomez for providing this report of the Administrative Senate. As reported at the September Board of Trustees Meeting, Ken Arnold has stepped down as the President of the Administrative Senate as he transitions this semester toward retirement. A heartfelt thank you to Ken from the Administrative Senate for his efforts on behalf of our group over the tiers, I mean, over the years.[875.12][875.12](Laughter). It's not in there, but I had to put that in there. It was too tempting not to. The Administrative Senate is the constituency group of administrators and confidential employees on campus. While we are not a representative group, we do provide valuable information and feedback to campus committees, the President's Council, and the President's Cabinet. The Administrative Senate is working to establish goals for 2018 and 2019 that will hopefully provide our group with a cohesive understanding of our roles on campus and how we can work collaboratively with faculty, staff, and students to improve the quality and efficiency of campus offerings. It is critical that we all step out of our comfort zones and expand our horizons so that we are more aware of the operational functioning of the campus. This is vital, this is vital so that we can work with all campus constituencies with a greater understanding of the integral roles that each group and area play within the greater campus community. We plan to take steps to ensure that we, as a group, engage in such activities to enhance the overall campus environment. We are also working to seek assistance and guidance from within to develop definitive guidelines and criteria for a variety of campus processes that we hope will assist in streamlining some possible redundancies. The Administrative Senate will be holding an after-work social at the winery next Friday, October 19th, at 4:00 p.m. This is an opportunity to visit with colleagues in a setting that is removed from the work issues that all confront daily. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your support of the Administrative Senate. Sincerely, Bob, Harris, and Maria. Thank you.
Thank you. 8.3, Associate Students of Napa Valley College Report, Rafael Manzo.
Good evening. Well, let's see. So since the last Board meeting, we held, the Associate Students held two tabling events in front of the library, one for Constitution Day, which is one of our federal mandates. We must host some sort of event commemorating Constitution Day. It's one of those things that we just have to do, you know, so we always have to put our creative hats on and think about what we'll do every year, so we, that's what we did. And we also did that for National Voter Registration Day. We, other than the tabling, we did a couple of the things. I mean, we made sure to send out a blast email with the help of Jessica Erickson at Admissions and Records, because we, we wanted to encourage our student body to get registered to vote if they weren't already, you know, that's super important, and it's something that we'd been getting a lot of encouragement from, even faculty on campus, to do. They just think that that should lie with us, with the student body encouraging, sorry, with the Associate Students encouraging their student body that we're responsible for to also, you know, partake in their civic duty to vote. So we went ahead and sent a blast email out with some links to make it as easy as possible if anybody doesn't know how to register to vote. And so that's one thing that's reported. The other, of course, is that we just held a candidate debate event for the, some of the candidates who are running for Board of Trustees positions, and I, it's funny because I was actually, I had my own personal academic activity going on that night, which was the Shakespeare play put on by the Theater Department's Shakespeare, Napa Valley, in the same building that the event was. So it's funny because we were just separated by a few walls, but I could hear the event going on over the intercom, the PA system. In my dressing room, I could hear how the debate was going on, and I could hear all the candidates answering questions, et cetera. I was checking in here and there, but really, I'm sure Huseifa during his report will talk more about it, especially since he was so much a part of the event itself. I could really only help with all of the preparations leading up to it, help with the setup the day of. I, you know, charged a lot of furniture over there and made sure to prepare the event quite well, and then I just had to say, "All right, I have to go do my thing, you have to go do your thing, good luck to us all." And afterwards, I saw my teammates, and they said that they thought it went really well, and that members of the public thought it went really well. Again, Huseifa will talk about it during his report, but I'm just happy, as a President of the team, that we all helped to prepare the event, and even in my absence, if I can't always be there to steer the ship, they certainly handled themselves quite well. I'm told, I'm told. And other than that, coming up, sure, I'll see many of you at the Legislators' Breakfast, I'm sure, and then also, Associate Student Government is going on a, going on a trip to a conference. It's Seesaw Leadership Conference, which is the Community College Student Governments of California. So something we do almost every year, and I personally, it's one of my favorite leadership conferences we go on. I love to connect with all of the other student governments in California. It's a really great time to learn leadership skills and interact with the other, the other people, the other students. It's just about my favorite, one of my favorite things that we do. So it's really what I'd like to report tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. And it was a very organized event. Okay, 8.4, Classified Association Report, Jan Schart, who is not present. And 8.5, Classified Senate Report, Martin Schumaker. Now report?
But I did want to warn the people, the blue tape is not holding so well. Initial update failed to meet, so I have to worry about the blue tape falling apart.
Thank you for that update. That was important. All right, 8.6, Faculty Association Report, Kristi Iwamoto.
Thanks for clarifying that, Martin, I was a little worried. A good evening, Board. I also don't have a whole lot to report. I did want to thank Trustee Mary Ann Mancuso for coming today to speak with our Faculty Association about her candidacy for reelection. We also had Beth Goff come in and say a few words for a few minutes as well, so that went really well. Negotiations are ongoing, as always, and I did want to mention to the body that normally I'm flying away or going away somewhere for conference, and I just wanted to make a point that we, I had a conference I was supposed to leave for. Our Community College Association Fall Conference was supposed to begin tomorrow morning, but the hotel where we were going to be staying at the Marriott in San Jose, as some of you know, had a labor dispute and had strikers. We, as a union, have vowed that we will never cross another union's picket line, and we will stand in solidarity with labor, so we moved to the Doubletree in San Jose to show our solidarity, who then, a couple of days ago, also had a labor strike.[1360.53][1360.53](Laughter). Their local engineers, Local 29, they also struck. So we've decided, in solidarity with our union brothers and sisters, to cancel our conference. Our union has made a pledge to reimburse every one of our members who already made travel plans that are nonrefundable, but we think it's more important for, for unions to work together, stand together, and make sure we support each other in California. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. All right, we go on to Superintendent President's Report, and start with the 9.1, Napa Valley College Foundation Report. Anne?
Oh, yeah, good evening, Board. I also have kind of a short, a short presentation tonight. Again, for those of you who weren't here, thank you from my office, which is over here, yes?
Anne, do you want to move that back up?
Oh, you can't hear me? Now you can hear me? Okay. Good evening again, and for those of you who weren't here, if anybody wasn't last time, thanks again to Dr. Kraft and the college for my lovely space over here behind this wall. It's nice, it's, we're getting decorated for Halloween, it's festive. We have a new slate, Board of Officers. Margot Perez-Brun is our new incoming president. Ginny Humphrey is remaining Vice President, and Laura Courtel, who is a new Board Member, is going to be our Secretary, and Bruce Ketrin, whom you all know, is our Treasurer. So we're meeting again at the end, toward the end of this month. Margot and I and the Foundation believe it's important to support two students from the college to attend the Latino Leaders Roundtable, and that's coming up again tomorrow. We're sponsoring two students from Dr. Tennyson's area, so, that she had a connection with. We're, we've been really working hard on an event that's coming up at Duckhorn to announce the Wine Education Center, and one of, one of our Board Members went to school with Alex Ryan, who's the CEO of Duckhorn, who is helping us with this event, so we're making a lot of progress with that. Still trying to finish up the fourth quarter, and then we have our new bookkeepers starting to do our new stuff, so we're making progress with our own bookkeeping. Yay! I know you're all excited about that. So, thank you, and that's the end of my report.
Thank you. Ron?
Yeah, thank you. Let's start with Oscar DeJaro, you've got a report here.
Thank you, thank you. My report hasn't been posted, but I want to, if you called the attachment, the invitation, every once in a while, I come up with, with some ideas that I think will benefit not only students but our staff. And about a month ago, I was having breakfast with, with the chief, and I, and I said, and asked, "Chief, let me, let me bounce this idea that I have and then get your input on it." And basically, what it is, is that I think it's important that, that staff and student affairs better understand the students that we serve, because there's a great variety of students, some we know perhaps a bit more than others in terms of student groups. And so I said, so, so this is what my idea is, chief, what should I call it? He said, "Well, just call it awareness of other students that we serve." And so next Thursday, and I guess you're invited, I haven't asked Dr. Kraft if I can send you the invitation personally, but, but next Thursday, from 11:30 to 4:30, there's going to be, there's going to be two groups of students that we have on campus that will be featured in terms of learning more about them, with underlying outcome of student affairs staff having, or learning better customer service for students in general. One of the groups is the LGBTQ student population that we have on campus. For this, for that population, we have Monae Roberts, who's at UC Davis, who's in charge of the LGBTQ Resource Center, who presenting with, with a presentation titled "Facing Trans: How We Can Better Serve Our Trans Students at NBC." The population that we have on campus is about 13% of our student population that many of us don't know much about or need to know more, learn more about, is the Filipinos student population. So for this presentation, I've invited Melo Pila. Melo Pila wrote a book titled Filipinos in Mayeko, and he also serves as Senior District Representative for, for, for Hurson, Mike Thompson. Together with Mel, Sherri Tennyson, who you met this afternoon, who will also be presenting. And so again, you're invited, also the first staff. I can't say that they're required or they're mandated, but basically, they are, unless there's, there's a reason why they can't attend. So we have about 115 staff members along with, with HR staff, and again, and members of student government as well, and if you, Board Members, are interested, feel free to attend. Let me know so we can make certain that we have a space for you and food and such. The other activity that I want to highlight is something that actually was brought to my attention about two weeks ago, and I guess back in 1974, Napa Valley College had a, had a group here that was part of a sister-city friendship with Napa, with the city of Napa, and Napa College got involved because Dr. Charles Ray, who's a math professor here, became the chairperson of that committee. Well, there, one of the individuals who was here back in 74 from this group, from Japan, from Iwanuma, is still, I guess still alive, is still around and is visiting Napa next, on the 26th or so. And so Betty Malgram, you may remember, she was a former PIO here, is helping out with this project, and so she's asked us to assist with, with having a tour of the campus and also a presentation of the campus for this group. So there's a, there's a Japanese Friendship Garden that was created here back in 74 that is still here, and there'll be other activities, hopefully some other parts of tour of the campus, and depending on how we can work it out, perhaps a wine tasting at a winery. So we'll be part of that, as well as the Office of Academic Affairs will be here to say hi and to welcome these folks. So again, if you're available and you'd like to meet this group from 1974, or at least when it started, you're more than welcome to join us. And that's, that's it. Dr. Kraft?
Thank you, thank you, thank you. I think I see yours, Bob, you submitted.
Yes, so, just very quickly, in the business and finance area, both Joseph Latunsky and I attended the North California Chief Business Officers Meeting at the Chancellor's Office on September 21st. It gave us an opportunity to touch base with business officers from our sister colleges here, community colleges here in the north. Earlier this week, auditors from CWDL Certified Public Accountants, our public accounting of... from CWDL Certified Public Accountants, our public accounting firm, were on campus. They were here Monday and Tuesday of this week, conducting audit testing and interviews to complete the audit for the fiscal year ended June 30th of 2018. In facilities, I actually have a little bit of a correction to make here. We, the close, we closed the request for proposals process for our feasibility study on campus housing on Monday, October 8th. And my report says we had five proposals. We actually received six proposals. And so we are scheduling interviews in early November with those respondents. In institutional technology, we have scheduled the upgrade of the battery backup systems in our server room to take place on November 10th. And then tomorrow, if you're on campus, you may see some analysts from Discovery Office Systems touring our various server rooms and facilities here on campus to do an analysis of our current network and server environment to assist us in identifying improvements and best practices to increase the performance and stability of our network. And on a personal note, I just want to report that I've recently learned that I've been approved to be a mentor for a Point Foundation scholar. And the Point Foundation is the largest provider of scholarships to LGBTQ students in the country. I'll be working with a student who will be starting in fall of 2019 at CSU East Bay. And it's particularly important this week. It's a significant week for the LGBTQ community. Tomorrow marks the, excuse me, 20th anniversary of the death of Matthew Shepard. And today is the 30th anniversary of National Coming Out Day. And so it's important for our students to know, then to see themselves reflected in the faculty, staff, and administration at our colleges. So happy coming out today to our LGBTQ students. And yes, an LGBTQ student can at some point become a faculty member, a police officer, or even a vice president of administrative services. So thank you for indulging me.
Congratulations, Bob. That's awesome.
Eric, I'm not sure you, you comment some, sure?
Good evening, Board of Trustees. So I have a longer report that'll be posted up for your reading and viewing at a later point. I'm not going to go over everything that's on here. But let me, let me start off with a couple of things. First off, just a quick update on fall enrollment. So no surprises with where we're at right now. Our retention rates are good. Again, our enrollment was down this semester, as I had reported at the last meeting. We have developed and have finalized the spring schedule of classes. And so we did a lot of work for spring to try and get our schedule down to the size of student need. And so we expanded course offerings in some areas, decreased them in others. And we're all set and ready to roll. And the students start enrolling in, will start registering in November. Yeah, yeah, just in a few weeks. So we're all set and ready to go with our spring schedule. AB 705 implementation, just a quick update for you guys on that. So math and English department and math and English faculty have been hard at work. And we have at least one English faculty member sitting up here tonight, have been hard at work on the curriculum revisions that are going to be associated with the implementation of that. Our goal right now is to have those curricular revisions to you in December. So that's, that's the timeline that we're working on right now. So I am hoping that we'll have whatever changes that are going to be coming, both in the development of new courses, core requisites for existing courses, archiving of courses, all of that stuff, and at the December board meeting for your consideration and approval. The faculty have been working very hard on that over the past few months. At this point, next steps that we have right now, so as we're finalizing those curricular elements, once those are in place and we can start communicating to people what it's going to look like next fall, we're putting together a series of communications that will be going out first to our K-12 partners. So with our local high school, high schools here in Napa, but also throughout our service area. And we'll be looking at even broader communication to the community through our public information officer and public information here at the college, to make sure that everybody out there is aware of, of what changes we're making. And that we're here to help them make their choices as they come in and start next fall. It's very likely that my own son will be matriculating to Napa Valley College next fall. So I have a keen interest in how all of this is being implemented as a parent, not just as a vice president for academic affairs. At the state level, so the, we have, and we talked about this a little bit at the last, at the last meeting, when we went over the presentation with Shawna Bynum and Erin DeFranco from the math and English departments respectively. We're still waiting on the changes to Title V regulations that are actually going to make all of this possible. So we have the legislation, but we don't have the regulations in place yet. I'm happy to report we're working on that right now. And as of today, I've been appointed to serve on the work group, actually to rewrite those regulations for the state. I've been at the Chancellor's Office today working on that. So we're hoping that those are going to go to the Board of Governors by January is the deadline that we've got set on that at the state level. So we'll keep ourselves in line with the regulations or make the regulations reflect exactly what we're already doing here at the college, if need be. Next down on the list, high school partnerships and dual enrollment updates. So I just wanted to give the board a heads up on this because again, I'm hoping that I'm going to be bringing things to the board this year related to this. So over the last few weeks, I have been going out and meeting with all of the principals of the high schools in our service area. I still have two more principals to meet with. I'm going to be going up to Calistoga this next week. And we'll be going to St. Helena, I'm hoping, at the end of next week as well, to follow up with, with the principals at those school districts. I've met with American Canyon, with Napa High, and with Vintage High School here in town. At each of those, the article that we had in the paper about the work that we're doing with St. Helena sparked a lot of interest. I got a lot of phone calls from superintendents and from principals and from interested parents and all sorts of folks in the community that are interested in finding out more about what we're doing with dual enrollment opportunities for students in our high schools. So we've had some really good preliminary discussions with the principals. We've gotten a really good sense of exactly what it is that they think that they need at their schools to start serving their students. For, for the most part, at every school, they talked a lot about core general education courses, especially courses that could help to supplement areas where they don't currently offer advanced placement options for their students. So rather than doing AP, the student could do a dual enrollment into one of our college courses. So we're looking at what our options are there, coming back here on campus, having conversations with all of the relevant departments and faculty that, and to figure out if we have the resources to meet what the interests are. So the next step is that we'll be, that I will be meeting with the, with Mary Ann Vias and others from the Napa Valley Unified School District, District Office. And again, with the principals to figure out exactly what it is that we can put in place for next fall. But our hope is that by next fall, we'll have some dual enrollment options in place for students at our service area high schools here in Napa. And hopefully expanding that to Calistoga as well, who has interest in dual enrollment in our career education areas. So next week, Dean Diana Chabot will be accompanying me to Calistoga to talk about career education courses and dual enrollment options and that. Beyond that, so the other thing that is on my report for tonight that I, again, I'm not going to go into in detail here. I was sitting at the last board meeting, thinking about all of the information that we present to you as a Board of Trustees and the reports that we have that come in from, from the constituent groups. We bring in a lot of stories about student success. We, you, you hear from our faculty. We talk about all of the academic issues here. One of the things I wanted to put in front of you here, and again, for you to take and read, I want you to know the tremendous administrative staff that we have here at the college. The staff here in academic affairs, as well as the other areas. What I've provided for you here is a couple of pages listing all of the other things that all of our amazing administrators in academic affairs do outside of administering and managing the divisions here at the college. All of the work that they do in the community, the boards that they serve on, all of the ways that we are deeply and intimately connected with the life of the valley. We have an incredible group of, of deans that work here in our area, deans, directors, and other administrators. And, you know, this is, this is just a sampling from, from my, from, from the deans out of academic affairs. The same could be said across the board for all of our administrators here at Napa Valley College. It's one of the things that I think is really important for us to remember. We are, we are the community. I know that we're here and we're managing the, the operations of the college and the business of what we do here. But we're all also people who live here and take great pride in the civic engagement that, that we have here with the community. And so I wanted to provide this list for all of you so that you could really get a sense of who it is that is doing the work and working with all of us here in managing the day-to-day operations of the college. So again, fantastically long list here. We have everything from, you can see the list that's up there right now with Maria Villa Gomez, who actually is going to be in the community tomorrow. Is Maria still here? And she, she may be going to prepare for this. She'll be at Redwood Middle School tomorrow, working with a mariachi concert that's going to be at Redwood Middle School tomorrow. She's been doing a series of guest spots on KVON for, on Spanish language radio, for those of you who've been listening to that. Diana Chabot working still tirelessly at the state, at the state level as well as at the local level, staying connected to the community. Bob Vander Veld, one of our newer administrators here at the college, has recently, if we scroll down a little bit, through the state, the Association for California Community College Administrators, or ACA, has recently landed a spot on the, the full title of it is, the Finance Legislation and Advocacy Committee for ACA. So he's going to be working with some of the high-powered presidents around the state, actually, Ron, with Willie Duncan and others, working on state-level issues on that. So I just wanted the board to really understand that, that when we bring work here, when we bring decisions here, when we put things forward for you for consideration, as we've talked about previously, with the incredible work that we do with curriculum, with our faculty, it extends to everything that we do here and everybody who works here. We are incredibly talented and skilled and dedicated bunch of people that get the work at the college done here. And you can always rest assured that we've done, that we've done our homework and that we know what we're doing when we bring you something. So just a list for you to review over the coming month. And thank you very much.
Eric, it's funny that you, before you go ahead, sorry, didn't want to interrupt the applause. But before you even started on that conversation, I made a note here of something I wanted to say. And it just, as we were talking about some things, leadership that you're doing, leadership that Bob's doing, and some of the other stuff that's happening, it's amazing how highly visible and the leadership roles that we have, not just local, throughout the state. There was an article on Kristi Iwamoto recently, and that she's, you know, she has such a leadership role around the state. And, and, you know, our, our folks at this, I don't know, I guess we're called a medium college, right? Not a small college?
We're tiny.
We're tiny. Okay, we're tiny. So, but
Small but mighty.
Because here, exactly. Here we are, this tiny little community college, and our people are giants in the field. So I just, you know, I just wanted to say that. You're amazing, like you said. Thank you.
Yes, and thank you for all you do. And I never had any doubts that you're bigger than life. Well, you know, we're, we're tiny, but tiny in stature and size, but we're big and powerful in what you do and, and what you bring to the community, all of you. Including faculty and you.
Thank you.
Nice. Thank you. Can you bring an update on this every?
[laughter]
That one? That's good. It's very good. And, and this will get posted for you all to see and share. Thank you for that. Thank you all for that. And thank you, Bob. But I'm going to start mine, my report off with kind of tag teaming in on the LGBTQ piece. LGBTQ Awareness for Law Enforcement is another, another small college with a mighty, mighty footprint. So our program coordinator, Greg Morales, along with some other folks, I'm looking here, San, San Jose, I think, yeah, drafted the language for this new AB 2504. And in essence, what it does there, as you can see, the commission shall develop and implement a course of training regarding sexual orientation and gender identity minority groups in the state to better understand and address community policing and to hopefully minimize misunderstandings, to up the profile of, of how police officers can understand different groups. Fabulously done. Greg, you know, Greg won the, what's the award? I'm sorry, Rice, maybe? Diversity Rice Award several years ago at the statewide level and, and really was quite an accolade for us and him. The second sentence of this is, or paragraph, is in anticipation of the passage. I wasn't sure of my language here, so forgive me, faculty, but I think this is working, right? Embassy has worked on course curriculum that may be delivered face-to-face. And I got this from the dean of the area. In format, both formats of the course have been certified already by the peace officers standards and through Napa Valley Criminal Justice Training Center. And our plans on working on the San Jose Police Department is to provide training for trainers. So we'll become, not only to be instrumental in it, right? Help me if I'm doing something wrong here, but instrumental in, in doing the, the legislation, but we'll become the trainers really for the state as, as we start to roll for. And, and wonderfully earned by Greg, who will be taking a lead in that role. So another great kudo for not only this program, LGBTQ program here, but across the state. Down below, another, you know, local favorite, Bill Dodd, has, has sponsored this California Community College Teacher Credentialing Partnership Pilot. It's a pilot program. Basically, what it is, is a grant program for community college and a, a state university to pony up together, to create a consortium, to work, to provide at their local campuses, teacher credentialing. And I'm not thinking that Napa Valley College will be necessarily in this, but this is big news. And, and we certainly will keep our eye on it and see how it goes. I'm not excluding that possibility, but that, that has a long way to go. Big news for us. This follows on, that last one, and it's fine to stay here. The, it really follows on some of the pilot programs and the extent and range and breadth and depth that the community colleges in California are experiencing, which is more weight in legislative action, more pilot programs, addressing what we have done in the past, which has been quite effective, but broadening that net to see whether or not pilots and baccalaurates could work, pilots and other kinds of training. So I'm very excited about the direction and trajectory of the community colleges. Okay, now down below, there is a, our Second Annual Legislative Breakfast. The board is invited, and I think you all RSVP'd or, or not. But if you have not, make sure that you do, if you can attend this. First, I want to thank the Office of Institutional Advancement, Facilities, and the Performing Arts Center to kind of pull in together. Missing anybody currently in that group? Yeah, pretty much.
Campus effort.
Campus effort. It was phenomenously, phenomenally successful last year. A lot of attendees. This is a picture from last year. It's, it fills a void that is not held in, in Napa, which is a, a high-end legislative conference focused on the needs of education, specifically higher ed. This year, Mike Thompson was scheduled to speak. Senator Dodd will speak along with, let me see, Aguela Curry. That's in here for you, I'm sorry. And also, I'm missing Barbara Nimko, along with myself. And it's, it's, it's a very solid piece, if you need to RSVP. And you've been invited to this. It's an invitee only because we only have enough room for 150 or so. Please RSVP. The rest there are selected pieces. I would say that on, on my notes, I, I attended a couple of things today. First, was able to speak and welcome at the mayor's breakfast on disability awareness. Wonderful group of people oriented around and focusing on another disadvantaged group, if you will, that need to be a part of the larger access that the college provides. And it was a wonderful group. It was my joy to really welcome them. And the second piece I was able to welcome today, the PsychTech, C-A-P-T-E Breakfast and Conference. This is a regional and statewide conference for our PsychTech folks. Robert Millay took the lead on this and organized it. It's, again, a feather in Napa Valley's cap, that the state conference was held here. And I'm very excited about that. So we're doing great things, and I would echo my colleagues here. That's all that I have at this point on that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Very uplifting bunch of information here. So we will go to 10.1, Approval of Minutes. Are there any?
Yeah, I just wanted to, I emailed, but I emailed kind of late. Let's see. Who was I? 14.4. So I just wanted to strike the first paragraph for a couple of reasons. First of all, we, we don't vote when we go through the first don't vote when we go through the first reading. We don't vote on those items. We just talk about them. So there was no vote. And second, we moved to action-only minutes, and we don't record discussion. So I think all we need for the 14.4 is the motion, without all the background information. Does everybody see what I'm talking about? You don't? Okay, so 14.4, Second Reading Board Policies. It's talking about the last meeting, and it's talking about that there was a vote during the first reading, and there wasn't a vote, because we don't vote on first readings. We only vote during the second reading. And second, we don't capture discussion. So during last meeting with those first readings, all we did was talk about them. We tried to reach consensus, and if we didn't, we just moved it on. We just moved on. So there was no vote. So I just want to strike that first paragraph.
This is a second reading, right?
Right, but it refers back to the first reading. So it says, "The board had voted six to one against this change in the first reading." We didn't vote, because we don't vote during first reading.
So the second sentence, "The board had voted six to one against the change in the first reading."
Right, we didn't vote in the first reading.
Okay, so that we can strike.
Right, but even trustee Martin repeated her request for changes. We don't capture discussion anymore. We only do action-only minutes. And there was no action during the last meeting. So there shouldn't be any of that, just the, just the motion from the last meeting during the second reading.
I think, I think I'm clear enough to capture that.
Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yes, I do. Yeah, so just move it to motion. I understand.
Yeah, so I moved to strike.
Catherine, if that's okay. So it's motion and action, and we can, we'll get there for you.
You'll get the, okay.
Do you want me to, do I need to make a motion?
Yes.
Or do we do it by consensus?
You can do it with consensus with that, knowing that, that staff will change that.
So we, so the minutes are approved. If there are no other questions or changes with the amendment to 14.4, that staff will take care of.
All right, so is anybody opposed to that? Okay.
All right, meetings, or meetings, minutes are approved. All right, we move on to 11.1. And the information items, 11.1 is the annual notification of student right-to-know clarity report. Oh. Where he?
Where did I come from?
He's still here.
I was, I'm still here. I was sitting, I was, I was sitting back in the corner there, because I didn't have to sit up here this, now.
I didn't even know you were there.
Yes, I was. I'm sitting back there doing, doing work. The, first, let me, just before I actually do the report, let me say thank you to the board for approving Lieutenant Wade as your next coming chief. You've made a very good choice. She will do an outstanding job for the college, and I think she is absolutely, without reservation on my part, the, the person who will, who will fit and will actually make you feel good, will make the, I think, the staff and faculty feel good, too, you know, with, with your choice. So I appreciate you making that decision. So for the clarity report, this is our annual notification of the clarity report. It's required under federal law. The, we published, the report is due October 1st of every year. I published it in September, I think I did it on September 25th. Notices went out, all of our notices went out through various medium, emails, NBC Communicate, we did it through the college's newsletters, et cetera. So we've met all of our mandates with require, with, with regard to getting the notice out there. And of course, it would take that minute for my phone to ring. Sorry about that. The, a couple of things that I will point out on the report, just as we'll go through, and then I'll take a look at the table with you. What has been added this year, and reflected in the report, but it's more so, is we added a new way of reporting crime to the college's menu for doing that. We took what is our NBC Safe, which is the phone app that we use here on campus. We added an anonymous crime reporting button to it. So if you have that, you take a look at it, you'll see it's part of that See Something, Say Something campaign that Lieutenant Wade was working on. The second part of that is you have now an ability to push a button on there and make an anonymous report. So that was added to, to the system. The other thing that we've added, I'm going to see if I can get this to play. It's a recording. Along with the sheriff's department, we've added a, the high-low notification to all of our patrol cars. And so you're going to see over the course of the next few months, where we, being collectively law enforcement within Napa County, putting out to the community that if you hear this sound, which is historically called a European siren, which isn't used in the US, that's why we've used it. What we're going to be training people is if you hear that, you need to tune into, something's wrong in that area, and you need to tune in to whatever sources you're going to use. It's just one more layer. And we've adopted it at the college as well, which is right in line with everybody in, in the county. So we're going to be rolling that out. We just got the cars finished today programmed, and so we'll be rolling that out. But if you hear that in the future, and you're somewhere in Napa County, tune in to some, tune in to look at your phone, next little something, because something's wrong. And that's the only time that we're going to be using that tone, which is to, one more layer of emergency communications.
Quick question. Where does this sound originate? Does it come from your cell phone?
It comes from the vehicles.
Oh, okay.
So it comes from the vehicles right now. We may add it to static speakers at some point, but right now it's tied to vehicles, so that we can go through an area and play it. And what we're, again, telling people is if you hear this, whether, wherever you are, if you're hearing that European siren sound, that something's wrong, and that we're trying to get your attention. So. The, the only thing new in the report, the other thing new is if you go down to, well, basically, it starts on page 12, but I just want to put, we had to add definitions this year. It's called the disclosure. If you go down Table Contents, just a little, oh, well, actually, I can just go to Table Contents. Basically, it's definitions. So what I had to do was add what are disclosure requirements, such as geographic definitions, criminal offense definitions, hate crimes, what is called VAWA definitions, and arrest and disciplinary referral definitions. Those are straight out of the law, really just, you know, I took the language straight from what is the law and added it to our report. Then you all have hard copies of it. If you turn to page 17, I'll give you just a quick rundown on the, what the, what's the particulars of the statistics are. As usual, Napa Valley College, we continue to be a safe campus. I mean, we're not, not short of activity, but we are a safe campus. The majority of our calls are still really just people who can't play well together. And we're, you know, sort of, in almost in a way, like, you go to your corner, you go to your corner, leave each other alone. And, and I think that does really sort of characterize a lot of what we do. The clarity report is a very narrow report, because it only looks at certain specific things, which are called Part One Crimes, which are, in essence, well, it looks at Part One Crimes, and then some additional crimes have been added to it. So for 2017, because we're always one year behind in terms of the report, we had one reportable burglary that was of one of our classrooms. Public property, that is the Kennedy Park Golf Course area, so they, you can see there, there was a robbery in Kennedy Park. We have to report it because it's adjacent to the campus. And there was four burglaries. The pro shop just couldn't keep from being burglarized. So that's what those were. The non-campus center, that's American Canyon High School. And so those numbers are relatively high, because it's, didn't occur to our students. Nothing happened to any of our students. None of this happened in our classrooms, but because our classrooms are on the campus, I have, you know, I being, or it's the college, has to report those. They had three, and it, three sexual assaults. Now, that's, that was gropings, actually. So just one of the changes that, that was made under the prior administration was all sexual, all sex crimes are reported as sexual assault. And that goes everywhere from rape to a, an over-the-clothes groping, are all categorized the same way. So it, it leads to a little bit of an issue with the numbers. The other one that you had there was there were three robberies. So when you look at it, and I want to be real clear, if somebody looks at it, and, and certainly if someone's going, oh, the college had six, you know, six of these felony crimes, we didn't have them. They, they did not involve our students, but because we have classrooms adjacent to the high school, or on the high school, we're required to report it. So that, that's why those numbers exist the way they do. We had one arson fire. It was a, that was out in our field. Again, that was a result of probably homeless activity. We were never quite sure. That is, they used a propane canister to start a fire out there. Liquor law violations, you can see that the majority of them, if you look at that, that is really Kennedy Park. Once again, we're not having much of an issue on campus. And then the other thing that was notable on there is in the first column, you had dating violence. So dating violence is now defined, it's, looks a lot like domestic violence, but they're not married. So there's, and that's, that's really just, in essence, that's the difference. So we had two cases of that. In both cases, they're relatively minor, but we, and we were able to stop the young men through, basically by running them to Oscar's office and, and, disciplining them. But in both cases, we were able to resolve those. But those got reported. If you flip over to page 17, the only notable thing on 17 was the hate crime that's on there. That was graffiti in, surprisingly, in the women's bathroom this time, because most graffiti tends to be in the men's room. But this was in the women's bathroom, up by the Student Activity Center, and this was a swastika that was drawn on a, on the wall in a, in a stall. So that, that was, that was the hate crime. Upper Valley Campus, we had no reportable crimes for, for last year. In terms of just, the, the final thing I'll say about that is with regards to where this report looks like there's a lot of zeros, I don't want you to think we're not doing stuff. You know, so our calls for service last year for the college police, we did 15,463 calls. That's a lot of business. So what it means is, we're doing, we're doing a lot of stuff, and, and that's ranging everywhere from probably our worst call, our, our toughest calls last year, where we had a couple, definite attempted suicides of students, and we were addressing those. It's in mental health, quite a number of mental health issues. But the majority really, you know, is, again, because the philosophy, we're really trying to educate our students. It's a learning institution. It's more of trying to deal with the, I can't play well with others, and trying to help them adjust their, their view of the world. If you're interested, I have more statistics, but I'll leave it at that for tonight.
Thank you, Ken.
I have a question.
Yep.
Yeah, I was just curious, because it came up at both forums. They asked about, you know, preventing sexual harassment, sexual assault. So I was just wondering, with this kind of report, does it ever drive prevent, like, campus-wide prevention efforts, like, oh, we know this dating violence has gone up, so we're going to do a school-wide prevention effort around that? And if so, where would that come out of? Does that come out of your office, or Student Services, or who would coordinate those kinds of prevention efforts?
Comes out of what's called the Saves Committee. So we, our numbers don't drive that. We do it anyways. Right now, we're in the middle of what we call Dating Violence Month. So if, there's a whole series of activities going on right now that are done in conjunction with ASNBC, with News in Town, the DA's Victim Services, Health Services, College Police. So we have a committee called the Saves Committee on campus. We've had that for a number of years. We do domestic vi, October is Domestic Violence Month. We spin it here at the college as Dating Violence. And so we have a whole series of things. We do tables, we do events, we have classes. Matter of fact, coming up next week is Purple Tuesday. So wear purple to show your support for domestic dating violence. So we'll be doing those. So there's a whole series of events that go on through the Saves Committee throughout the year. There's also posters. If you go in any of the restrooms, you've probably seen posters in there. So we do a poster campaign, along with a lot of activities. We also do stuff with athletics. So that goes on all year. And then in April, we do Sexual Assault Awareness Month. So we have sort of two key, large-scale monthly events, and then we do a lot of activities all throughout the years through the, and the Saves Committee is, the college police chief is the chair of that committee by, by virtual position, but it involves, again, ASNBC, students, health, the DA's Victim Services, and News. So we do a lot of activities.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Ken? All right, thank you.
Thanks.
All right, we move on to 11.2, Core Indicators Report.
Thank you. Dr. Warnall has prepared our stuff for us. Hi, Robyn.
Okay, all right, thanks. Okay, good evening, board. I'm here to present the Core Indicators Report, tracking our 2017, 2018 performance on five institutional performance measures. There are three goals for my presentation tonight. First, to describe the purpose of the Core Indicators Report, and that purpose is local or internal. Second, to provide context for the institution-set standards referenced in the report, and those are driven by an external context. And third is to highlight some key takeaways for you as board members, as well as the campus community more generally. So the Core Indicators Report is part of MVC's System for Monitoring Institutional Performance. It was first developed in 2013, 2014, and incorporated into a series of regular reports that are produced by the college each year. The document included with the agenda for tonight's meeting represents the fifth annual report of its kind. What makes the Core Indicators Report unique is that it includes an evaluation of recent performance against locally established standards, and it's in the form of a one-page summary document. Regarding the context, as I mentioned earlier, the context for the Core Indicators Report, and particularly the institution-set standards included in the report, is external. The need to establish institution-set standards is primarily driven by accreditation requirements. As part of the 2013 Annual Report to the Accrediting Commission for Community and Junior Colleges, so the ACCJC, our accrediting body, member institutions were asked to identify institution-set standards on five indicators, including the successful course completion rate, the fall-to-fall persistence rate, the number of degree and certificate recipients, and the number of transfers to four-year institutions. The institution-set standards were intended to define institutional and academic quality, and should performance ever fall below the established standards, then it should trigger some kind of institutional response to explore the issue, implement strategies to provide additional support for student success and achievement, and improve institutional performance. As required, MVC established its institution-set standards in 2013, and reported them to the ACCJC. The Core Indicators Report is designed to help address at least two accreditation standards, and those are noted here on the slide. So first, within the standards related to academic quality and institutional effectiveness, Standard 1B3 states, "The institution establishes institution-set standards for student achievement appropriate to its mission, assesses how well it is achieving them in pursuit of continuous improvement, and publishes this information." And second, within the standards associated with the governing board, that's you guys, the standard 4C8 states, "To ensure the institution is accomplishing its goal for student success, the governing board regularly reviews key indicators of student learning and achievement, and institutional plans for improving academic quality." So to address both of these accreditation standards, not only is the Core Indicators Report shared with the board each year, but is also shared with the campus community, including the Planning and Budget Committee, as well as the public through the college website. So here I've projected the 2017, 2018 Core Indicators Report, and I just have a few things to note about the structure of the report. For each institutional performance measure, the report identifies the institution-set standard and reports the 2017, 2018 performance level alongside each of those established standards. And so you can note the greater-than signs that are associated with each of the five. measures. The check marks at the bottom of each column indicate that the standards were met last year. And the Core Indicator's Report also includes some additional detail or drill down associated with each institutional performance measure. And so that drill down includes successful course completion rates among certain types of courses, which are reported in column one, persistence among subsets of students based on their enrollment status, and that's in column two, the number of associate degrees for transfer that were conferred last year, and the proportion of degree or certificate recipients who took at least one basic skills course while attending MVC, and that's in the box below column three. And finally, the number of transfers by institution type is the drill down for column four. Oop, uh-oh. So the key takeaways or talking points for you all is that the report is posted on the college website, as well as board docs, and it can be shared with your constituents, those bragging points if you'd like. We are monitoring performance, which we do regularly as part of our effective practices associated with institutional effectiveness. We exceeded all institution-set standards last year, and the percentages noted at the bottom of the slide represent the amount by which the 2017-2018 performance exceeded each institution-set standard. And you'll note that that ranges from approximately 5% to above 100%.
Thank you. That's great information. Congratulations to...
Everybody.
Everyone.
Thank you, Robyn.
Yay! Okay, we are now to Consent Calendar. We're doing pretty good. 12.1, Approval of Consent Calendar. Do we have any items that wish to be polled or questions?
12.3.
I'm sorry, what was that?
12.3.
All right. Catherine, you have 12.3?
Yes.
All right. So we'll poll 12.3, which means, what, you're looking at me?
No.
Okay.
You're all fine. You're fine. Just getting ready to write.
All right. We'll poll 12.3, which means that the rest of the consent calendar is approved with, without 12.3. Seeing no objections to that? Consent calendar approved. And now we move to 13. Where was that item moved to?
I think it became 13.1.
13.1, so we need to refresh?
There we go.
So that we can appropriately vote? So if everyone would just refresh their pages?
Move approval.
Refresh your page, join the meeting again, and you should now have the order correct so that we can vote. 13.1, Ratify Financial Documents. Okay, so we have a motion by Baldini and a second by Iverson, I believe. All right. And is there discussion on that item?
Yeah, I just pulled it because I'm going to abstain on the approval. I had a question about the Hispanic Network table being on the warrants. Originally, I thought that was going to be part of an expense through the president's contract, but as a work-related expense, but I guess because Dr. Kraft couldn't be there, instead, the money was taken out of DAS. And I thought DAS, just like the general fund, that all of the expenditures had to be, you know, linked to education in some way. So I'm not understanding how we would justify paying for all of us and people's spouses to go to that dinner out of DAS. So I know Bob's looking into it, how the justification for paying for that table out of DAS, but until I have that information, I want to abstain on the approval of that document.
It's a scholarship event, so I...
I'm sorry, I just wanted to say that the funding source was the president's Rotary Fund, which is part of DAS. And I had told trustee Martenson that I would gather additional information about what that fund was set up to do and what the parameters are for that fund, and so I'll be providing that information.
So, so the only thing missing here is not that there's anything appropriate, inappropriate as to where the money came out of, it's just we need to, we're just going to...
So the money came from Rotary?
Provide information.
So what he's finding out is what was the intent when Rotary, I guess, gives that money to DAS? What was the intent of the money? And is it, was it appropriate to have trustees and their spouses attend a dinner?
There's a little semantic pieces here, and Carol Lee has the insight on that.
Hi. Yeah, that was an endowment established with the independent foundation, and the funds are moved to DAS. It is completely unrestricted and at the discretion of the president to improve relations, improve the campus, anything he wishes.
Thank you, Carol Lee. So it sounds like all is checks and balances are all good there.
Yeah, I'm still going to abstain.
Of course. Okay, so we have a first and a second, and online voting has been opened?
Okay, we have all voting yes with Martenson abstaining.
Thank you. 13.2, Curriculum Changes for Fall. Do we have a motion?
Move approval.
I'll take a second.
Who, it was, okay. Rios made the motion and Baldini second. Any discussion?
Yeah, I do. So I just wanted, I emailed Dr. Kraft this question. So I had a question about removing the preceptorship, and the reason why is because I had reported out maybe a year ago that several nursing students had come to me really concerned about the fact that the preceptors program, well, I guess when they signed up for the program, the understanding was they would have preceptors, and I guess it didn't, it fell through in the middle of the program, and they were very upset by it. They said how valuable that experience is, which it's basically a mentorship while they're in the nursing program, and how valuable that was. And that was one of the reasons why they actually came to the Napa Valley College Nursing Program versus another nursing program. And so I'm just wondering, now that we're seeing it permanently go away, why? Basically, was it a lack of funding? Because my understanding was they didn't have the, there used to be a position specifically to get those preceptorships, and that that position went away. So I'm wondering, was it a funding issue? What was the basis, what is the basis for getting rid of the preceptorship as part of the nursing program?
I'd like that question.
Eric. Eric? Yeah, I can take that. So first off, so the, the course that's in front of you on the packet for archiving is the last of the archives that you had approved back in May. So at the May board meeting, we brought through the other elements of the nursing program that are going through curricular changes right now. And so the Nursing 250, 251, I do believe that it is that we have on here tonight, is being archived because it's being replaced with another course that does the same thing. So Nursing 253, which is titled, which is a capstone course is for mentorship or preceptorship moving forward. So the, the nursing program, just to reiterate, we talked about this a little bit last year too, it's, it went through a pretty major curriculum change and development last year in consultation with the Board of Registered Nurses. This is the last piece of that puzzle going into place. This is all of the new curriculum that becomes active as of this spring with the new cohort of nursing that's coming in. So this particular course is being archived, but the mentorship that's part of the nursing program absolutely is not going away. That's a required part of nursing programs for, for any nurse that's going through any ADN program at any community college, either a preceptorship or mentorship or some combination thereof. So we still have that as part of our curriculum.
So will it look like, because I think what they said happened that one year when they didn't get the preceptors, I think this was last year, I don't know, time's getting a little blurred, but I think it was last year that they didn't get preceptors. So in the future, they'll still have preceptors?
So in the future, the curriculum is open, is open in the Nursing 253 course to set it up as the capstone course for the program, which could include preceptorship, mentorship, or other forms of onsite clinical experience for the students under the direct supervision of a licensed nurse. Preceptorship as it currently exists and mentorship are two slightly different takes on it. The program is moving into mentorship as being the way that they're working on this, but all of this, all of these activities and all of that experience is still a core part of the program.
What will the new course be called? So this one was actually called Preceptorship?
It is called the Nursing Capstone Course.
Okay.
It's Nursing 253, and it's already been approved by the board.
So then I just have a last question, because I guess part of the issue with the preceptorship was there used to be a person that, I guess that's kind of tight, you know, it takes time to find these preceptors, and there wasn't actually funding to have a person do that, and I guess that went away. Will we be, you know, is that still an issue, having somebody that has the time to go out and find these preceptors for these students?
There's still a mentor that's involved in this. There's still an onsite licensed clinical nurse that is the one that is supervising and working one-on-one with the student. The relationship is slightly different. If in the future the board would like to have any information about the nursing program, if you want further explanation of that, we could provide that for the board at the board's pleasure. But this is, but this is all, so again, I just want to remind the board that the curriculum as it comes to you, this is what has been developed by the faculty in the program, working especially in this case with the Board of Registered Nurses, which is the accrediting body for the nursing program. So this is coming all the way through that process when it comes here to you. So this is an, so this is an archive to clean up the final archive that happened last May that the board approved.
I just have one last question. Do students, are they part of, how are they a part of this process? Like, if there is a change, like to get rid of preceptors and replace it with mentors, is there an opportunity for students in the nursing program to kind of give input into these kind of decisions? Or how does that work? Like, as far as shared governance and students having an opportunity to give input into decisions that affect them, and specifically around curriculum, is there a way for them to give input into these kinds of changes?
Yeah, so, so you're conflating two things, so let's separate them apart here. Shared governance is not the same thing as a student in a program having a voice in the curriculum in the program that's being developed, as it is right there. So actually, Raphael is left here, but from a shared governance perspective, Raphael is a voting member on the curriculum committee. And so we always have a student representative that is on the curriculum committee, and that's how the students exercise their role in shared governance relative to curriculum. In terms of input, there's always surveys that are done of students that are in programs. Part of our program review process that Robyn and I work with involves student surveys of the, of the curriculum. That's something that's done on an ongoing and regular basis within it, but that doesn't mean that every single group of students will always have an opportunity for input every time they're going through as a cohort. But we absolutely do take students' experiences and responses to the curriculum into account as we're working on curricular changes and developing programs and modifying programs.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So, so now we're just voting on this particular 13.2 item, Curricular, Curriculum Changes for Fall, and Eric has explained very well what this addresses. We had a motion by Rios, a second by Baldini, and I believe we're ready to vote, or we did vote?
You should be able to vote. It's, it's...
Okay, I think I may have already. Do I, did I?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
I see you there. Okay, that passes. It's unanimous. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, we move on to 13.3, Approval of Special Privileges for Non-Resident Tuition Fee Waiver. Do I see a motion?
I move approval.
Baker and Iverson. Any discussion? All right, we're ready to, ready to vote?
Trustee Rios, we're waiting for you.
I didn't get the vote.
Oh. Would you like to tell me?
Yes.
Yes, a yes. Thank you. That motion carries, it's unanimous.
All right. 13.4, Faculty Emeritus, Fall 2018. And this one's pretty amazing, right? Forty-one years of service.
It's an honor to make the motion for approval.
I have a second. All right, we've got Iverson Segura, and we're ready to vote, happily ready to vote. Do you want to say something, Eric? You look like you're excited about sharing something.
Yeah, yeah, I do, I do need to say something here. I know, I know that Sharon isn't here with us tonight. Sharon has been at this college for a long time, as noted on this. She has educated generations of students in philosophy. She was also my very first college professor.
Oh, wow.
And was somebody that I gravitated towards quite a bit when I was a student here, and it's been an absolute honor to serve with her as a colleague in all of my capacities here, and we will miss her dearly here at the college. She has been a fixture of Napa Valley College for a long time and has really left a mark on how we operate here and how we teach philosophy to our students. Thank you, Sharon.
Thank you, Sharon, from everybody.
Okay, and we're waiting for a vote by trustee Rios.
Of course we are.
There we go. Thank you. The motion carries, it's unanimous.
Okay, great. 13.5, Twenty, 2019-2020 Budget Development Values and Assumptions. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Do you want to?
I do just want to point out that this is a document that you see every year. We have made some changes to the document this year. We've added a couple of paragraphs, one having to do with the percentage of the overall budget that is reflected in salaries and benefits, that we will stay at the statewide average of 85% or below. As you know from our previous discussions, we are below that average. We are under 80% currently, but this is just memorializing that, stating something that we're already doing, but putting it in the budget development values and assumptions. We also added a paragraph on facility maintenance and capital improvements, ensuring that we set aside funds that are necessary for proper operations and maintenance of the campus physical plant. Again, something that we are currently doing, but memorializing it here. And then finally, our very last paragraph about grants and categorical funding. We've added some language into that paragraph at the suggestion of the Planning and Budget Committee to indicate that any time we look at grant applications and donations, we'll review them to ensure that they're consistent with the mission and strategic plan of the college, and that these funding sources include funds to reimburse the district for administrative overhead, and that it will not obligate or should not obligate the district to ongoing expenses after expiration of the funding period. So those are all things that are incorporated into the current version of the budget development values and assumptions, which we'll be using to kick off our 2019-2020 planning and budget process at the beginning of November.
So we don't ever have a situation where, where we have a contractor, MOU, or something that we're working with, and if it runs beyond that period, everything just gets cut off? Is that what you're...
Right. So the idea is that if, we're certainly not suggesting that we wouldn't pursue grants that would be used as seed money to start up a particular activity, but that when we look at that, we look at the ongoing effects that it will have on the district budget, and that it is something that is sustainable and is within the mission of the, of the district.
All right, thank you.
It doesn't really matter, but there's just an extra period on point four if you want to fix it.
All right, we're ready to vote?
Yes, I have opened online voting. We're waiting for trustee Martenson. Motion carries, it's unanimous. Thank you.
All right, letter, 13.6, Letter of Intent, CIP TA EP 1819 Funding, 2018 Portable Assistance Grant, SBA SBDC Funding.
Nice.
I know, right? A, B, C, D, E, F, G... A, B, C, D, E, F, G. Do I hear a motion?
So move.
Second. Baldini Segura. Any discussion? All right, we're ready to vote. Okay.
We're waiting for trustee Baldini and, nope, just trustee Baldini.
He's right there.
There we go, thank you, that's, motion carries, it's unanimous.
All right, 13.7 is our opportunity to get Dr. Kraft out of our hair for a while. 13.7 Superintendent President, Out-of-State Travel for Conference. So move.
There's nothing uploaded, I asked earlier, but I don't even, we don't know what it's about.
We need a second and then we can have questions or discussions.
I'll second.
So we have Kawacha and is there a second?
I second.
Oh, Baker. Any discussion?
I also was wondering where.
I thought something would be attached, like a description of the conference or something.
Yeah, we have them here. Catherine and I missed connections on posting this, so this is a foundation which I'm an advisory on the board. It's in Virginia. It is a combination, it's academic leaders throughout the United States and the world, kind of an integrative approach to education, embracing the liberal arts, business, philosophy, architecture, and the arts. A very lofty group, which I shared with the board in previous conversations. I'm excited about this, it's a three-day conference. It's already included and part of the current budget and is in the president's budget for this year, so there's no additional costs to the district on this.
When is it?
It is the 26th of October, so most of it's on the weekend, but we'll upload this and the dates included, we have that information, so.
All right. Any further discussion? We're ready to vote.
Ex trustee and Superintendent.
So will this be uploaded?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, we have, the motion is carries, it's unanimous.
All right, off you go, we're on. Audit and Finance Committee Description. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Martinson Baldini. Any discussion? All right, we're ready to vote.
Oh, I'm sorry, there we go, it should be open. Okay, motion carries, it's unanimous.
This is a pass. It's starting from Amy's side. So you're going to call for that. She's going to put it up.
Amy, pass this round. All right, we move on to 13.9, Legal Review of Procedures. After our last meeting where we discussed putting this on the agenda, I also asked staff to review the history of this item to better inform the board of the timeline and previous work. So this is, we have done quite a bit of work on this, but I will open it up for a motion first.
So move.
Second.
All of what? No.
Yeah.
Baldini made a motion, Martinson, second. Let's remember what this agenda item is. This agenda item is to consider, we are not reviewing all of these APs as we've done that, and what we are doing is voting on whether or not we're getting a legal opinion on it. Okay? That was the agenda request.
That may be.
All right, so we've got in front of us, if you want to look at the timeline, and I do, I think I have some copies that Catherine gave me that were too late to get uploaded, but we'll get them uploaded. So if you want to.
Send them this way.
Pass, oops, I only gave you two. I only need three this way.
One more.
Okay, pass this way Jennifer.
Mr. Parker.
All right, so let's look at this and just, just a quick review. So July 13th, 2017, this committee met and discussed the ARs at the time, we're calling them APs now, but at the time we're calling them ARs. And then we had the discussion on August, in August 10th, at our regular meeting. December 14th, at our regular meeting, we brought it back for discussion on all of these APs. As you remember, Jennifer, Rosetta, and myself, we created a little ad hoc committee, or I think Rafael was chair at the time, so he created it. And with that ad hoc committee, we just looked at some things that might make meetings streamline a little bit and more efficient. And the process, you know, went through a pretty good amount of time as well as back and forth and some suggestions I know by trustee Baker. Once, was it Catherine at the time, that sent the, that sent it out and said, can you please let me know if you have anything more? I think trustee Baker was the only one that came back.
It's down there.
Okay. And then actually met with trustee Baker to finalize her comments and we finalized the APs and published to the BP manual. So as you can see, there's been a lengthy process over these documents. So the, so the vote again is up for, are we interested in legal review of all of these four APs or not?
Yes, so do you want me to comment since this is my item?
If you have a, if you have a discussion item and then we'll vote, if you have a discussion and then we'll vote.
Yeah, so, do you mean, yeah, I want to present why I asked for this item to come forward, so, and these are all things I brought up as we went through the process, but my ideas, it didn't really change the process or alleviate my concerns, so basically I have two concerns, so.
So I just have to ask a question though to what you just said. So when Catherine reached out to everybody.
I responded.
And asked, you responded and what took place?
I responded with all my concerns and they stayed the same, so.
So people ignored your suggestions, is that what you're claiming?
I'm not going to say she ignored them, but they didn't get incorporated, that my suggestions didn't get incorporated into the final product, yeah.
Well, I would say it doesn't appear here because staff has no record of those receptions. If you have them, you might add them back in, but there is, there is no email from you.
Okay, well, I had several emails, but anyway, so my concern, first of all, when, these are brand new and I have two major concerns that I brought up in the past and one of them is the appropriateness of the ARs from the standard point that they contain many policy statements versus operational statements. I passed out the board policy on the difference between policy and administrative procedure. And in the fourth paragraph, the second to last paragraph, it talks about, says, "Administrative procedures are to be issued by the president as statements of method to be used in implementing board policy. Such administrative procedures shall be consistent with the intent of board policy." So in other words, the board policy statements drive the administrative regulations in terms of how the president's going to carry out those policies with his staff. So if you look at the actual APs, these are all related to board operations, they talk about how the board is going to function. That's not the purpose of an AP because we're not staff. So many of the items that are in the AP should actually be, if they're going to be adopted, they should actually be adopted in board policy. For example, it talks about what we're required to, as board members, we're required to reveal sources of our information during our board reports. That's, if we're going to adopt that, we should adopt that as a board. That shouldn't be the president telling us that we're, we have to do that.
So I'm going to have to.
Actually, can I just finish for a second? I'm almost done, trustee Menkuso.
Okay.
Okay, so I'll just make a broad statement that not just that one, all of them contain statements that I believe are policy statements because they're talking about how the board will function and those should be adopted by the board itself, not come from the AR where that's a directive coming from the president. The second thing is that I actually have some legal concerns, one of them I just mentioned, putting into, even to board policy, putting in this idea that board members have to reveal sources of their information during the reports. Not only is that not enforceable, we can't be forced to do that, but I think it's against our First Amendment rights and could potentially be against whistleblower protections that we've talked about recently as far as protecting sources of information. So I think there's a legal point there. The other legal point, which I had brought up multiple times, is in the Agenda's AR, which says, has this new process that we've been using, that I've expressed concerns that I feel that we're violating the Brown Act from the standpoint that we are talking a lot about items, trying to determine if there's a strong minority in order to put it on the agenda, and so we're having a lot of discussion about items that are not on the agenda. So that's another legal point that I would want reviewed. So basically, I just want them all reviewed for those two things, one, to see if they're appropriate, if they are actually containing policy statements instead of statements that should be in an AR, and two, for some legal points like about requiring us to reveal sources of information and also this new way of getting items on the agenda, whether or not it violates the Brown Act.
So first of all, I think that what we have to recognize here as a board is that trustee Martinson is asking that some of this language from these APs belong in the board policies. These are board policies that we just approved as a board.
What I'm asking for is our attorney to look at these to see if they're appropriate.
Excuse me, I let you finish your conversation, right?
I know, but you're saying what I just said.
I know, but what you just asked is that some of this language needed to go into board policies and as a board, we just approved those board policies, okay? So secondly, we have discussed these items, the agenda process, all of these items ad nauseam, and I don't know why we want to continue having this debate. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask the rest of the board if you have comments, otherwise let's just put this to a vote and.
Can I have a question, just clarification?
Yes, trustee Rios.
From what you just said and what I think Amy said. I think that Amy said that the policy expressed in some of these or all of these APs are not policies that we have approved separately. But you just said these are policies we've approved, so I want to clarify that.
We have just approved.
If you see the difference.
The policies that these APs are related to and that, and that she is asking for legal review of these because now we want to go back to those policies that we all just reviewed and add language to them.
I don't necessarily want any of these statements in the policy, I'm just saying if we're going to have these statements, they should be in the policy. I don't agree with many of these statements, but if they're going to be there, if we're going to have statements about how the board functions, the board should adopt those, we should, in policy.
Let me, can I give an example so I can, because I don't think that was quite.
Sure, go ahead, go ahead.
Quite right, but I'm looking at AP 2200, that the first sentence says, "The board trustees' individual reports should focus on these kinds of things," right? That's a board policy. Is that in an actual board policy? I hear one of the complaints or comments that Amy is making as that some of these policy statements and the AP have not actually been adopted as board policies.
Correct.
We have.
Well, can you pull, here's BP 2200. And again, the BP is more of the what and the AP is the, how do we get it done?
Right, and I think we all get that.
Okay.
My question is, take that first sentence, that's a board policy. Is that actually, has that actually been adopted in one of our board policies, separate from this AP?
That is the board policy.
Yes.
It's the AP.
No, it's an AP.
This is the.
Yes, but the.
Oh, I'm looking at the AP that was attached to our agenda.
Here's your AP. All right.
But show him the BP.
I might be able to, I'll add some things in terms of your process here. So the board examined the BPs, board policies, clearly in your piece. You formed a subcommittee, which then formulated your own APs. So these are not generated through me, these came through your subcommittee, went back out, and the timeline kind of shows this, went back out from your subcommittee, back again to the board, back again, did several loops. I think one of the things I heard was disclosing sources, I think, which is not the reading here on this one. If a member of the public has requested a trustee announce an event or activity to the board, trustee can decide whether to make that announcement, but will disclose on whose behalf. So this is the Friends of Napa River are having an event on Thursday. This isn't about, we're not asking, nor does this even remotely say, I would like a future agenda item and I have information on this from a community member, certainly you wouldn't have to divulge that. So this is just about planned events or activities in the community and on whose behalf, who's holding it. So there is no nefarious disclosure of sources here, these are, these are public events or even if they're private events, I suppose.
The board doesn't have APs, again, the APs are what you write to carry out our board policies. If we're going to have policy statements, they should be in board policy, adopted by the board. We've talked about the fact that we don't adopt these APs and they can be changed at any time, it even says that as well here, copies of all these policy. Administrative procedures may be revised as deemed necessary by the superintendent slash president. So we have a blurring between what should be in policy, what should be in AP, and I think we need to stay clear that policy is policy, AP is AP. So anyway, I'm not asking for these statements to be put in board policy, I'm asking for them to be reviewed by legal counsel as far as which statements, if they are going to be adopted by the board, should be adopted in board policy versus remain in these administrative procedures that are the purview of the president.
And I'm just clarifying that these actually have been adopted by the board.
Yes.
No.
Thank you.
They haven't, we never voted on these.
Because we don't vote on APs.
Exactly, so they're not adopted by the board.
She just showed us the BP that includes that. That was my question, have we actually adopted these? And we have.
Where's the BP that has these statements in it?
Well, the BP's and the APs don't have the same statements.
Can you show, can you put the BP up that shows it has these same statements that are in the AP?
Carol Lee might be allowed.
Okay, so that's the BP.
Carol Lee, do you have some input here that might be beneficial?
I was just going to clarify that the content of the how board reports are made and what they contain was developed by a committee of the board.
Right.
Right, but they don't speak for the whole board and the whole board never voted on these.
And we didn't, the whole board saw this month after month.
And never voted on it.
Trustee Baker.
Never voted on it.
Trustee Segura, no, we don't vote on APs.
Exactly, so they can't be adopted by the board and yet these are.
Consenses, they were agreed upon and then the staff.
They were not, I didn't agree to these, I didn't agree to any of these.
The staff reached back out and asked for any additional comments and the only person that responded was trustee Baker.
Okay, you pointed out that we've talked about these ad nauseam, part of them is because we can't get any resolution because we just keep going around and around, that's why I'm asking for legal review.
I'm sorry, trustee Martinson, I believe it's because you can't get a resolution.
No, because we need legal review because there's issues with them. They don't fit the criteria of administrative procedures. They don't fit the criteria of administrative procedures according to our policy and there's legal concerns about how we're doing agendas and about being required to even disclose the source of an announcement.
I seem to remember that when we brought these APs, after we worked on them, there was a lot of discussion and, and a lot of discussion came from you and I think that we made some adjustments.
No, we didn't. And we never, the point is that we never voted on them. So, a subcommittee can't decide how the board's going to function. And if we're going to decide how the board functions, it should be in board policy and it should be voted on and adopted by the board.
We, we didn't, we didn't agreed upon this APs on the first run. They were discussed on the board.
We have a timeline up here.
There's never been an action item, there's never been an action item voted on by the board because we don't vote on APs because the president creates them for his staff in terms of how we're going, he's going to carry out our policy. You should be able to line up board policy and APs and see, here's the policy statement, here's how the president's going to implement it with his staff. Here, these are all statements about how the board's going to function. That's not the role of an AP to tell the board, for the president to tell the board how it's going to function. Or for a subcommittee to tell the board how it's going to function. If we're going to have statements about how the board functions, it should be in board policy. It should be put as an action item and we should, it should be voted on by the board and approved by the board. These never have been.
Call a question?
I'm not sure what to do there.
All right, let's take a vote. Okay, here we go.
What is your, what is the vote?
Yeah, what are we voting?
Oh, it's to, for, okay, so the request is for legal review. So, if you want legal review, it's a yea, so we can spend more money on lawyers. Or if you don't want legal review, it's a nay.
One, two, three, four, five to two.
Can you read the names, please?
One abstention. We have a no. Michael Baldini, yes, Jennifer Baker, yes, Amy Martenson. You did.
Do you want legal review or not? She can change it. You do want legal review. Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Raphael Rios is a no. Segura, trustee Segura is a no. Kyle Iverson, no. Mary Ann Mancuso is a no. Student trustee, Josefa Kawaja is abstained.
All right, motion fails. And we can finally move on from that. Now, we go on to board reports and 14.1, standing committee and other appointments. So, Das, trustee Segura, do you have anything? Did you meet?
Yes, we met on the 25th. We welcomed a new representative from the foundation. Reid Lackland is the new member. Among many things, we discussed a new software that is being tested in conjunction with E-Brite and it will be used for the legislative breakfast. It's going to determine, it's going to help us determine especially credit card charges. We'll be able to differentiate DAS monies as opposed to NVC, so that, that would make financial reports much more clear. And so, Dr. Parker will have an easier time determining those types of incomes and determine, you know, all of the finances on DAS. Also, after, the Silverados had a very successful season, could have won more games, but it, it was really good for the community. We're still trying to, to determine how the concession did and what, you know, how the monies are going to be shared between the college, the concession, our food truck and, and them. We're getting new quotes for vending services. Getting ready for the film festival. And so, pretty much, pretty much, among other things, that's what we discussed.
Thank you. Sounds like a lot of cool stuff going on.
Oh, yeah.
All right, number two, the Viticulture and Wine Mary Foundation Board of Directors, trustee Baldini.
There was no meeting, so no report.
All right. And Legislative Affairs Committee, there was no meeting. We're planning one for December. And then Audit and Finance Committee, trustee Martenson.
Yeah, so we met. We approved the committee description that you approved tonight. We also approved to the changes to the budget values and assumptions to add in the percent cap on salaries and benefits and also the section on facility maintenance. And then we also approved the introduction of a new policy on facility maintenance, basically making the same policy statement that the president would direct adequate budgetary resources towards facility maintenance, which is modeled after one from the California State University system. And I believe that's going through shared governance and perhaps will come to the board. And our next meeting will be with the auditors on Thursday, December 6, at 4:00 PM here in the boardroom.
All right, thank you. Real Property Management Committee, I caught kind of the tail end of this. It looked like it was a pretty, pretty good, pretty substantial meeting. Who's, oh, this is Baldini again.
Yes, we held a meeting on October 4, Thursday. The minutes, campus agreed to, the committee agreed to a target completion date for the district and campus master plan of fall of 2019. The committee agreed to continue the general area map presented in the initial report documented on August 2015. Trustee Rios suggested the approach developing a DCMP, that's the district and campus master plan, should be similar to those taken by other jurisdictions, including public meetings and a general plan guided by a policy statement. Staff presents several overlays, a draft webpage for the development of the project and information on American Canyon-St. Helena properties at the next meeting. The superintendent president, Dr. Kraft, reported the results of conversations with city officials on various topics, including sports facilities, the Pelosi Building, Kennedy Park, Streblo Drive, Mullen Highway 221, and the Pelosi House. Update on the Mount Veder properties, Dr. Kraft and Robert Parker provided update on renewed post-fire cleanup work so we could do an assessment after that is done. It appears that the state will have some funds available to accomplish that, that work. And next meeting will be November 1st and we also heard from Mr. Parker this evening regarding the, the feasibility study on the housing. And you heard it tonight from him, six, six applicants, is that correct? And that'll move forward to an interview or a presentation process, an interview. That concludes my report.
Thank you. That's a really good response.
Thank you.
That's great.
Catherine.
And the last is McPherson and that's not, when does that kick up? When does that start? It's, yeah, that's what I thought. Okay, so I'll quit asking about it.
Soon, it'll be here before you know it.
All right. So, future agenda item request and I assure you that, I'm sorry, what?
We have some log information if you'd like to look at that.
Yes, if you want to pull up that log, that would be great. And we will not have discussion on items, but we will ask that the person who is requesting the item, please give enough information about the item you're requesting so that people understand what that item is. All right. So, right now, we have anything in particular that's outstanding, that needs urgent attention or anything like that? What's this one on 8/2018 that says none and there's nothing there?
Oh, that's simply to indicate that there were no requests on that date.
Oh, on that, on that meeting, okay.
I can remove that, I just wanted to-
Okay, so we can, we can note that 9/2018, the legal counsel review of procedures is complete.
Okay. Can we get an update on where the, the two policies, the bids and contracts policy and the whistleblower policy, where they're at right now in the shared governance process?
So, the bids and contracts policy will be going through the shared governance-
Well, I'm gonna-
I'm sorry.
I am going to stop us there because now you're diving into-
Yeah.
Oh, the item.
Now, we're having discussion.
So, yeah.
Isn't the point is to go over this list and find out where we're at?
Well, it's kind of yes or no, but to discuss it too deeply is not a, is not a transparent piece and that's not what we want to do here. So, we couldn't, this is not the updated version, right?
Yes, it is. We went through and added a couple of dates.
Okay.
So, this one you'll see here.
Your request could be an update and ended at that as opposed to asking for an update.
Yeah, that was the most recent.
Okay.
So, this was presented, we could say it was presented in a pre-board workshop and so from staff's side, this is complete.
Could I throw something else on the list that I'd like to see?
Yes, yes, we're going through the log to see if there's anything there that we need to say is complete or still pending. And other than that, anything that's new. So, who has new item request?
I've been hearing a lot of discussion and people have been asking me about a cultural community center, if that's something that the college could look at, so.
So, you'd like that as an agenda, future agenda request item?
Yes.
Cultural, did you get that, Catherine? Say that one more time.
Cultural community center, so.
And now you can describe because that's not enough. So, now it would be perfect to describe.
The Bressero program that's out here, I'd like to find a better home and bring in some more cultural aspects of our community and some of the history.
I thought we had one. I remember being, sitting in the audience before I became a board member that we had a cultural center.
We do. We can certainly bring back information that would clarify that. Easy to do.
Thank you.
So, I have a request to have a review of our legal services. We've had a breakdown in the past and since there's been so much talk about, you know, that people think that the very, we don't have our lawyer here and very rarely does something make it past this board to be reviewed by legal counsel. But I think there's a myth out there that the board is costing a lot of money with legal requests. So, I'd like to actually see a breakdown from last year of where, you know, as far as legal requests and monies and where it's actually going. The board versus litigation versus-
Why not this year?
Well, because this year's not over.
Okay, but this year we have, the board has incurred, and I know, I know what those dollars are, a lot, legal fees.
Okay, however you want to do it, but I think we need a breakdown of our, I think, I'd like to see last year, all of last year. And if you want to look at this year, that's fine. The other thing, I think, kind of related, I think at some point we need to review our legal services. I know we've had this attorney for a long time, longer, I think, than Michael Baldini, perhaps. And I think it's important to review every now and then to see if we think that we, you know, are getting a good service or if we might every now and then think it's appropriate to go out for a new attorney. I think just like with an auditor, you might need a fresh set of eyes on the board and I think it could be good to change every now and then. So, I'd like a review of the legal services, both a breakdown of cost, where the money's going, and then also talk about whether we should go out for a new, new attorney.
Can I just, are you specifically asking for board legal fees?
We're, no. We're getting into discussions, so it's up to her if she wants to-
A breakdown of legal services, where the monies went last year by category and then also just a review of legal services generally in terms of, do we think we're getting-
I think we can request legal fees by, by our board usage, but other than that, we're-
No, in the past, we've actually had it broken down by category, like planning, you know, for example, all this campus housing that, that requires legal services, et cetera. So.
So, you want an audit of all the legal, legal fees paid by the college?
I don't know if I'd call it an audit. I remember we've gotten a report in the past, so a similar report. As far as the future, I mean, we, we actually know that we had an increase in legal fees for the budget, so I'd like, so I'd like a breakdown of where that's going as well, where it's projected to go in the future because we know we had an increase in our budget. So, maybe a breakdown where that's projected to go as well.
So, I'm capturing this as a review of legal services and primarily it is a financial examination. And then we can break out-
Financial and then also just a review of the quality of our legal services. It's kind of two separate things, legal, our quality of our services and whether it might be appropriate to go out for a new attorney from time to time, just to get a fresh set of eyes.
Is that something that board would-
That would be a different piece, but-
Yeah, we did an RFP for legal services right before Bob came on board, so just to let you know.
So, maybe we'll, we'll present-
We did that for the board, I'm talking about for the board attorney. That's what I'm referring to.
We did that for legal counsel for the district.
Okay.
So, we can present as much as we can in that big bag.
Yeah, it could be two separate things and there's no rush, but it could be two separate items.
Any other agenda request? All right. Seeing none, we move on to trustee and board chair reports. Mr. Baldini. Oh, wait a minute.
Please.
Trustee Kawaja, you have lots of great things to tell us tonight, I know.
Thank you. So, starting off, we had our Equity and Inclusivity Committee meeting. It was a retreat, sorry. I think Craig did a wonderful job bringing these people together. Then we had Friday, October 5th, we had our Board of Trustees candidate debate and I thank you all for coming there. Dr. Kraft, thank you so much for being there. Amanda Badgett, she's not here, but I want to thank you, her as well, for being there. Then we had our EIC District Committee meeting on the 8th, 8th of October. For future, we have our legislative breakfast. I have RSVP'd. Oh, I'm sorry, I missed something. We had our Constitution Day, September 17. Then we set out tables in front of the library. We had like sort of quizzes and raffles to, one of the raffle was for, to go into legislative breakfast and whoever gets the more points goes into the raffle. For future, I have legislative breakfast, I set that. CSO Conference next Friday, hoping it'll be quite an event. I think that is all for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, trustee Baldini.
Thank you. A busy month.
Not in this country.
Not in this country, yes, throughout the world. But as an employee of Trefethan, we were able to welcome the Napa College Cooking School at our facility and chef Elena and, and the students able to walk through and, and with our chef, chef Chris, and experience our, our gardens as well as taste a little bit of wine. So, that was, that was very nice. Attended the Police Academy graduation and that, they always get right to the heart and I leave a little bit of myself on the, there every single time, very emotional and very happy to be able to attend. My fellow trustee, who I respect very much, happy birthday Raphael and belatedly, and I'm sure that's why you caught a lot of fish, but-
That's right.
On a, on a very personal note, my daughter, who's a student of Napa Valley College, as well as many of my nieces and nephews are too, but got her married, so that, that's milestone, yes. And I want to thank you, Bob, and, and for those that are willing to stand up and, and be there, for those that need- For those that need the support. I have, I don't want to miss anybody, but I prob, I, 34, let's say 34 nieces and nephews. And, and I count, and most of them or many of them have walked these halls as students. And, and there is five that, that would benefit from folks that step forward and stand up like you have for others. And I appreciate that. Thank you.
That's it. Trustee Baldini?
That's it.
Okay, trustee Baker.
I feel like I'm here all the time lately, but I looked at my calendar and it didn't look that way. So maybe I'm just imagining it. I too attended the police academy graduation, very moving event, particularly this one. Very glad I was able to attend. Continuing with the leadership academy and got to go to my first alumni lunch. They invited me even though I'm not technically an alumni yet. And attended the Shakespeare event at Copia. Sat in the front row and about 95% of it went over our heads, but we totally enjoyed it. And let's see, I attended the candidate forum here at NVC and also the one that the League of Women Voters did for the city council. So, and saw a lot of our community members there. And the last three days, I've been helping to register young people to vote. And we registered about 450 at American Canyon High School. Very exciting. And they're hitting Napa next.
Pre-registereds?
Mostly, mostly pre-registereds. But there was, there's one young lady who's turning 18 on Saturday and she was so excited that she gets to vote. It was really, really cool.
That's great. Thank you. I'll, I'll just run through mine real quick. So Napa County Hispanic Network Gala, love watching all the scholarships being given out. It was just fabulous event. Police Academy graduation. I think that we've all alluded to how personal and how heartfelt that event was that particular day, even though it always is. The young woman, one of our graduates, had just lost her father in the line of duty. And, and so she, her badge was pinned by two of his former coworkers, CHP officers, which, you know, just, we, I just wanted to fall apart at that point. And she was so brave and she was so strong. It was just incredible. And Eric, thank you for speaking, being the spokesperson in place of Dr. Kraft that day. You did a fabulous job. Had a workforce alliance of the North Bay meeting. Superintendent Town Hall at ACHS, fabulous, packed room. It was great. She just seems awesome and she's so engaging and, you know, approachable. Also went to a Napa County strategic plan where I was able to make sure that our voice was heard there. And, you know, for programs, how the college fits into the whole Napa County picture. I think it's important that we all make sure that, that somebody's there, that our voice is there whenever Napa County is trying to figure out their future. And then today was interesting. Started out at 7:30 this morning at the breakfast, the disabilities employment breakfast, which was again incredible. We talked about that earlier. And then went to, back to American Canyon for a government affairs committee meeting. And that was a great conversation. There were people there discussing housing and also the various measures and props that are going to be on the ballot in November, which was important. And then came back to meet with the faculty association, which was great. One of my favorite crowds to talk to. And, and then came back. So my car is charging out in the parking lot because it was running dry. But here we are. So moving on. Trustee Iverson.
My goodness, you've been busy. Been busy as well. I attended the Hispanic Network Gala. I've been out in the community and been hearing a lot of good, positive things. That was highlighted by a vice president or VP, Cher. And I just want to commend you too. That was heartfelt and you made it a lot easier for both family and friends. So thank you.
Trustee Sigura. Police Academy graduation. Yeah. Never stopped crying. It was, it was good. It was very moving. Too bad you got a flat tire because you missed a really good party at the network gala.
But for having the flat tire.
Good for Jennifer and Amy because they were able to attend. And so the DAS meeting and the budget and finance committee meeting. And earlier today, we, when we went to the career center presentation, congratulations, Mr. DeJaro, and what you're doing with American Canyon and what's happening here and the scope of the entire program and how the students are not only getting counseling on career paths, but they're actually getting jobs, practicing their future trade. So it's working out wonderful. Thank you. Great student success story, so.
Oh, I'm sorry, trustee, I thought you were just going to like take it over. Trustee Rios.
Oh, well, don't worry. I don't have really a report. Thank you, Jennifer, for taking over my position when I got a flat tire. I think the only thing really, I attended the real property committee meeting. And I think that was about it. Thank you.
Wow. And you're, all right, trustee Martenson.
I just, I want to say thank you to Josefa for the candidate forum and the way you structured it so intentionally. Honestly, you structured it more than the League of Women Voters. And I can tell that you, everything that you did, you did to create a safe space for all of the candidates. And I, I don't know if you did it intentionally as well, but I'm guessing you did. Like the way you modeled gender, gender equity by having you and a female student alternate with the questions. And I just thought, you know, students are so far ahead on some of these issues and adults have a lot to learn from you. So in terms of, you know, creating safe spaces and gender equity and the whole thing. It was, it was amazing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chairman, I know this is out of, or these are maintenance issues.
Oh, okay.
May I? President Kraft and trustee Rios, microphones are not loud enough and I'm sitting in the front row. So it's just a matter of turning up the volume on their mics. Martin, trustee Martinsson's goes back and forth from being garbled.
Okay.
Number two, there, you have not repaired or replaced or done anything about the lighting at the stairs going out of the building here. It's still very dangerous at night. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
We, we miss you at board meetings telling us to speak into your microphone. So, so we need to, we need to start reminding each other. All right. Okay, is that everybody? All right, so we have no reason to go back into closed session, I'm assuming at this point. Future board meeting will be held on November 8th, 2018. Seeing no objections, meeting adjourned.